Chair's report. I just want to announce that on March 11th, this is the Town Caucus at Turkey Hill Elementary School at 7:00 PM. The school committee has two open positions this year. Carol will be running, correct?
Correct.
And Meredith will not. So we have one real, true vacancy. So if you're interested in running, please attend Town Caucus and feel free to reach out to any of us to find out what it means to be sit on a committee and what the commitment level is. So then also Meredith is going to report on Fund Our Future.
So it was last month, we attended a Tale of Ten Cities, that presentation's on the Lunenburg website. This was a follow-up to that. There were representatives from the state, Hays, Tran, among others were there. MTA, or yeah, MTA was represented, FEA, the Lunenburg and Leominster School Committees were represented, as well as the teachers. So all three cities were represented there. There was a review of the Promise Act, which is the one that would be K through 12, and then the Cherish Act, which addresses some higher education needs for funding. Again, they were looking at healthcare, special education, ELLs, low-income students. Those are the four pillars that they're looking at. This presentation was a little bit different because we got to sit at tables. There were some activities, including a sticky note activity eliciting from the tables what we would imagine to be in a fully funded school and what do our students deserve for a school. One thing that I found interesting with both the activity and the share-out is that it reminded me a lot of the needs assessment that the leadership team had done. So a lot of the things that they were calling out as far as staffing, professional development, and those things were the same things that we had been talking about through the leadership team and the needs assessment for your budget. Let's see, the legislators, Benson was the one I had left out, they spoke about their understanding for the needs and their previous efforts, and they were asked to commit to future development of this. And they were also asked, and they might come to us again, to ask school committees to sign onto the Fund Our Future resolution. So I wanted to make sure that school committee members were aware that they might come to us and ask us for that. So we might want to add that to a future topic of discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Meredith. Public comment? Does anybody have public comment? It's for agenda items right now only. No? Okay. We have warrants on, and do we have line item transfer?
We do have a few line item transfer requests this evening. One is from the Turkey Hill Elementary School, looking to transfer $800 from a line that would have funded the music program. The students typically buy recorders as part of the music program there, but the new teacher teaching music at the Turkey Hill has approached the ordering of those recorders in a different way. They're using an online approach to purchase and save some money. So as a result, Mrs. Champagne is asking to transfer the monies that are remaining in that account over to support professional development. Additionally, we have another request from Mr. Londa to transfer funds from a couple of different lines. Transfer from the dumping fees in the amount of $6,400 from the trash line, $2,100, and the emergency expenditure line, $4,859, for a total of $13,359, over to the maintenance of building contracts. This move will allow us to fund design work, elevator maintenance, bleacher maintenance, and some inspections. Questions on either of them?
No? Okay. We'll take a motion.
I will move that we approve the line transfers as outlined by Dr. Burnham.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have minutes on the table to approve from January 16th, regular session. Have you all taken a look at them? Did you review?
I'm sorry.
Did you review the minutes?
Yes. I move that we accept the minutes for January 16th.
I just had one correction. Instead of Dean Tran, they read Jean Tran. We may want to fix his name.
Geez, I didn't see that.
I will amend my, my motion with that change.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The superintendent's report?
So on the report this evening, today I completed day six of the new superintendent induction program. As you may remember, there are eight content days in total. Today was day six, so two left. Hopefully, we don't have to use that snow day in April. And work is on track with the timeline to get the entry plan completed so that you can have a report of findings in March. Principal search updates. We announced last week that Mr. McGrath has been appointed to the permanent position of high school principal for Lunenburg High School. That was following a series of forums where folks had an opportunity to provide some input as well as an interview with Mr. McGrath. And I must say that I am very happy to have him joining the leadership team as a permanent member of the team. He's really done a nice job in the interim role. As far as the principal search at the primary level, the committee has been put together and they've had one meeting to do.
Two meetings to date?
I just came from one.
That's right. Where were you? Yeah. And folks are, they've worked on developing questions for the interview. They're starting to look at resumes for candidates. And I'm pleased to say that, you know, we have at least a dozen candidates that meet the minimum criteria of at least five years' teaching experience and at least five years' administrative experience in some capacity or another.
And I'm happy to say that the committee has gone through all the resumes and we are in agreement, the candidates we'd like to next put forward for interview.
That's great.
Yeah, we.
Very good.
Lot of good work today.
Very good. So at this point, interviews are tentatively planned for February 26th and 27th. The athletic director's search, this is breaking news.
Yeah, it's breaking?
Breaking.
Breaking.
There has not yet been an announcement pushed out, as I have been in the new superintendent induction workshop all day. But the process has brought forward Mr. James Bunnell as the recommended candidate. I had a chance to interview Mr. Bunnell, and he's been offered the position, and he has agreed to accept pending successful contract negotiation.
Goodness, I hope that's successful.
So I will push out a formal announcement to that effect for everyone tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow? Okay.
The budget update, the process. Last we were together, I told you that we would hold some community forums for folks to come in and ask us some questions about the budget. And two forums were held on Monday, January 28th, one in the afternoon at the Eagle House. And we did have a few folks attend, and we had a very good conversation that lasted about 90 minutes. We had another one scheduled for that same evening at the middle high school, unfortunately. No takers on that evening. But I think it's important to offer that opportunity for folks to engage in some conversation about the process, so.
So at the Eagle House, was it just seniors?
Yes. It was.
Okay.
And there was a lot of really great, great discussion. So it was time, time well spent, I think. I wanted to also make you aware that the Behavioral Health Advisory Council has continued to meet, and we're looking to pilot the Break Free From Depression curriculum. It's a curriculum that's been designed by Boston Children's Hospital. The focus of the curriculum is on increasing awareness about adolescent depression. The goal of the program really is around increasing adolescents' awareness about depression, teaching them how to recognize it in themselves and in their friends, and provide them strategies for finding help. The Behavioral Health Advisory Council recommended that we pilot this curriculum with our eighth graders. And the folks at the middle school had the opportunity to train the staff who will facilitate the lessons. There will be additional information heading home to parents. Parents will have the opportunity to opt out if they don't want their child participating in this pilot program. And lastly, there's been a realignment of the Mid-Watch League. This happens every two years. As part of the realignment, we will be part of Division Four, which includes Clinton, Maynard, Littleton, and West Boylston. And you have more detailed information about that process and how that went from A.D. Bunnell. And that's all I have for tonight's report.
Thank you. So our new business is the Blizzard Bag Advisory Presentation. Oh, wait. Liza, I do that every time. Eliza, will you give us a student report?
I can. This Tuesday at the primary school marked the 100th day of school. Students in kindergarten celebrated all day by stamping 100 times, counting out 100 pieces of snacks, making a 100-piece puzzle. First grade made 100-day collections in sorts of groups of 5, 10, and 25. They then finished with a parade dressed as 100-year-olds. At the Turkey Hill Middle School, on Tuesday, February 12th, the talent show is for students at 2:00 PM, and then the talent show for parents is 4:30 to 5:30 PM. Wednesday, February 13th, is the spelling bee for fourth and fifth graders. Friday, March 1st, is Community Reader Day. The winter box tops for education challenge is underway, and the box tops must be submitted by February 15th. The father-daughter dance is Saturday, February 9th, at Turkey Hill Elementary School from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM. Admissions is $5. The Lunenburg PTO will be showing the second Lego movie on Sunday, February 10th. Doors open at 9:30 AM at Cinema World in Fitchburg. Tickets are $6.50, and it is advanced purchase only, so you can go to the lunenburgpto.org and click on the fundraiser link to buy tickets for the event. The PTO is also hosting a school skating party at Roll On America in Lancaster. Turkey Hill Elementary School is invited to skate February 15th, middle school. March 16th in the high school is April 13th, all from 5:30 to 7:30. The price is $10 per person. At the high school, the competitive class plays are next week, February 13th and 14th at 6:30 PM. There's a new club joining LHS. It's the Earth Club, and it will focus on making the community a cleaner place while conducting projects to better the environment. Students attending MASCE are raising money that will be donated to the Special Olympics. In March, they will take a polar plunge off of Cape Cod at the MASCE conference. You can donate on Facebook, on the Discussing Lunenburg page, or on the Lunenburg School and Community Information page. And then just a brief sports recap. The ski team, the boys' ski team is 0-7, girls is 1-6. The girls' basketball team is 8-6. The boys' team is 4-11. Hockey is 11-5-1. The girls' swim team is 8-4, the boys is 7-5. And then at swimming, at the swim league event, boys got six overall, girls got third. And then both track teams went 5-0. They won the league meet and are league champions.
That's a lot of stuff going on.
It is a lot of stuff. A lot of things to save.
Okay. Now it's time for the Blizzard Bag Advisory Presentation.
Now it is time.
Are you going to take part in that?
Well, I am going to take part in that. So should I, I'm going to ask the committee to come forward so we can...
Yes, please.
And I'll come down with that.
Okay.
How's that?
Yes, perfect.
I'm not sure exactly how this works.
Switch chairs, don't you guys?
Yeah. Dropping.
First, I'd like to introduce the members that came this evening. We have Heather Witham, and we have Beth Ossino, and Jessica Frank, and Annika Scott. And they were part of our group that worked very hard, starting in October, to find a way to elicit ideas from the community involving Blizzard Bags. So I'm going to read the proposal that I sent to you, just so you will, so we can record it, so everybody knows what it is. So based on survey data, comments, and discussion with staff, parents, and students, the Alternative Structured Learning Day Advisory Committee is proposing a Blizzard Bag Pilot Program for the 2019-2020 school year. In the event of extreme weather conditions, as we have all seen in the past, a DESI-approved plan is required to be in place to allow for the use of Blizzard Bags. Although the pilot program uses Blizzard Bags quickly, this committee recommends the use of Blizzard Bags beginning on the sixth snow day. This pilot proposal includes the use of Blizzard Bags on two snow days during the 2019-2020 school year. These two days would therefore not be made up at the end of the school year. For the purpose of the pilot, we propose using a Blizzard Bag on the first snow day, and then again, a snow day at least three weeks later. By separating these two days, staff, parents, and students will be able to weigh in on any snags, difficulties, and positives gleaned from the first experience. Any issues could be adjusted between the two days. Our suggestion is that teachers develop these assignments in grade level or departmental teams, realizing the need for modification for varying levels at the high school and special education and 504 requirements. We realize this pilot program creates questions in many areas that are beyond our jurisdiction. In our opinion, the following areas, and perhaps others, would require additional research and/or agreement before proceeding with this pilot program. Special area teacher responsibilities. Therapist, guidance, social worker, nurse, psychologist responsibilities. Cafeteria workers. Instructional assistant responsibilities. The bus contract. Computer access. Teacher responsibility during the Blizzard Bag day. Grading of the Blizzard Bag assignments. Student participation requirements. Professional development. And monitoring assignments for length and difficulty. After each component of the pilot program has been completed, all constituents need to be surveyed again to determine if and in what manner this program should continue. So in other words, there were so many assorted pitfalls that we couldn't address, that in order to make this pilot program work, there are things that would have to be worked out first. So.
Questions or comments? How do you propose working those out prior to the pilot program starting in the fall into next winter?
It is something we would have to ask Superintendent Burnham to spearhead to take care of, because obviously, this group cannot take care of the bus contract and such. So there's quite a bit there that would have to be looked at. We took a lot of time looking at people's comments, teacher comments, parent comments, and these concerns, concerns parents had, teachers had, as well as the committee.
Like, we had some brainstorms that we had going on, but we can't solidify anything because, you know, they were just brainstorms. And we would need, like, input from either, like, the pairs, or other teachers, or Dr. Burnham principals, so we can't solidify anything without input from other people.
I think also, since there are obviously other Massachusetts districts that have already implemented this, that I'm sure that other super, you know, it could be like a superintendent meeting where they, you know, how did we handle, how did you handle that? How did this district handle that? Like, those kinds of things. So, and someone's been done before, so I'm sure, you know, other than remaking the wheel, see what other districts have done.
So one thing you mentioned was spacing out the first and second. What if, and not starting until the sixth snow day? So...
Sorry. That's, so that would be two different years. So the pilot year would just be have it so we can test it, see how that went, have another one so we can see, you know, did they get any, how did that go? Right? And then if it actually passes and you guys decide to actually have, like, have a plan that we register with DESI, then, then, like, in the 2021, is that right?
Yep.
Year, that would be when we suggest, starting on the sixth day. Like, have the five approved calendar days, and then on the sixth day, like, so only if there was really bad weather would it be needed.
The big question kept coming up was why? Why would we even do this? Which is why we thought the sixth day, because this way, people couldn't see the value of doing it without, like, why? Is it just to get the kids out earlier? Is it so people can vacation? You know, there's, there was that big why. So by doing it the sixth day, we thought it would be just for the extreme weather, not just the regular five days.
The big why, if I can just reiterate, it was already in the report, really, but the big why really is if we had, if there was another year, I mean, our weather is changing crazy. If there was another year where, say, we had 12 snow days, you can't just, if we didn't have an approved program, you can't just say, okay, well, we talked about it, so now we're going to have these days. You have to have a school committee-approved program that's approved by DESI to even use them to count. So even if we don't use them in the next year, like, it's, I think it's good to have a plan where we have the option to use them.
And I think Dr. Burnham covered the reason why to use the Blizzard Bags, too, is, like, we just had a huge cold snap, and there were plenty of schools that were out of school because it was too cold to go. You know, so there are different reasons to use Blizzard Bags, obviously for the snow, but there have been other things, like the water main break at the primary school, or so different things have been coming up, whether it's, you know, a tornado coming through or whatever. There have been just awkward things coming through. So if we have Blizzard Bags, we have reasons to use them as things come on.
Can you tell us the financial impact? Because what is going to be involved in this, and how much is it going to cost the district to implement this pilot program and any program going forward?
I'd like to say that there's really theoretically no financial impact, because potentially, teachers working for the Blizzard Bag in lieu of a day that they would have been at work. That said, there are definitely going to be contractual impacts. There are staffing rules that have been outlined in this presentation. Folks, like, let's say, food services. If there's no school, and they lose that opportunity for that day, they potentially are losing a day's pay. Because there isn't going to be a makeup for that day where they will come to work and recoup that money. So we definitely, you know, there are going to be impacts that will have to likely be negotiated with the different unions that would be involved. What about the impact preparing these Blizzard Bags, getting ready to do it? There's going to be time to prep for it, as far as teachers are concerned, and that sort of thing. How is that looking like it's going to work? And I would say that realistically, yes, they're going, they're going to need to take some time to prep. But again, they would prep for the day that they're losing, too. Right? So they prep their lesson for Friday. If there's no school on Friday. For this initial, initial year, before it actually occurs, so we're in the 2018-19 school year, and they're going to prepare at some point for the next year? Would they be doing it during this school year, during the summer, at the beginning of next school year?
I thought that assignments had to be approved.
That has not yet been determined. Who would have the final approval? What's the process to, you know, submit for approval? All of that would be detail that has to be worked out.
And the difference...
You know, it presents a challenge where we don't have a curriculum director to oversee the, this sort of curriculum development implementation of this program. It's a challenge. But I think if it were, you know, if you're looking at, in the pilot year, they're proposing two.
Right.
So teachers would have to come up with two. If you know that now, teachers can be working during their common planning time during the rest of this year, you know, to be developing these two. So it doesn't necessarily have to wait until summertime, and teachers have to work on it over the summertime. You know, one of the things that we talked about, particularly at the elementary level, it really lends itself to having a grade-level project. So Blizzard Bag Day One, Grade One, teachers would all work together to develop what, what that assignment looks like for the first graders on that Day One Blizzard Bag Day. It gets a little bit more nuanced in the high school, where you've got different levels of the same course. It's not insurmountable, though.
Do you want to address what we talked about as far as the high school?
Sure. So a few ideas that come up that, you know, teachers could possibly have something prepared ahead of time that aligned with their course. We had discussed in some of the forums and some of the in-school discussions, some options for that, some of the great opportunities to flip a classroom, for example, or to come up with a lesson that really would work from home for a particular student or for all students. And then the other thing that was discussed is having something ready to go in advance, but maybe also having the option for teachers, if they so choose, to switch it out, so that it aligned with, for example, the week of lessons they were in the middle of. So these are all discussions, I know nothing is set in stone, but this is the type of thing that we had talked about as we were going through it. What would be the nature of the assignments? You know, what would be options for flexibility for teachers? There's a limited amount of time that students are supposed to be spending during a Blizzard Bag Day, so that that needs to be taken into consideration as well. And there were some concerns we heard from the students that we certainly thought about when considering it.
You have, in the packet, was some data involving the surveys. Basically, the surveys came down to each parent group, each teacher group were in favor. Some more than others, but were in favor. The student group at the high school was not, and the fear was there would be too much work. And that's why we talked about it. The high school has got to look different. You can't throw them a project on top of projects they already have. So that's, that's got to have a different look than what you would have at the elementary school.
So what are next steps for us, getting models, exemplars for the different campuses to consider? What are we, where are we at with this? Well, I think as the committee has indicated, there is additional research that has to be done. Some of it could involve members of the committee. We can reach out to other communities that have implemented and learn from their experience, what works well, what they needed to troubleshoot, et cetera. Again, so that we're not recreating the wheel. But there are other elements of this work, you know, having discussions with unions around the impact that obviously is beyond the scope of this committee. So is that something that you're then moving forward with? Well... I think that if, if the committee approves to move to the next steps, then I think that we're looking at having some impact bargaining with the different unions.
If we approved this, the next steps, we don't have to approve the pilot program, correct?
Right.
Correct.
Because I don't think we can approve the pilot program without knowing.
Don't we see it? Right.
We don't know the program, we don't know, like, we can't approve, especially the financial piece.
Yeah. I was just going to say, in a time when budgets are very tight as...
Huge constraints this year and I am really not...
Negotiation, negoti, you know, that's just...
There's a lot of unknowns at this point.
Yes.
To be able to move forward.
Our thought in...
I think it's a financial burden on parents.
Our thought in moving forward was that our charge was to see what the community thought. The community we are bringing to you, the community is overwhelmingly in favor.
Except for the high school students.
Except for the high school students.
That's a portion of our community.
Which is a significant portion of the community and we understand what their concerns are, and they are reflected in what our concerns are here. Our suggestion at this point is not for you to approve the pilot, but rather to approve researching further into the pilot, because it was not part of the scope of our charge.
And I would be comfortable seeking more information.
Yes.
Before approving. And, and just from the work that you guys have done, it's, it's great. And, you know, as one of those parents who is in favor of this, because it gives me the opportunity to plan my summer with my children, I like the steps that you've taken to get that information. And I do think taking a pilot approach of, let's see it, try it out for a couple of times, see how it works, tweak it as necessary, is the right approach. There's just too many variables right now for us to say, or for me to agree to implement it for the next school year until those unknowns are solved.
And I think part of the research also would be reaching out to the high schools that had it, had it working and what kind of feedback they've gotten from their students. Maybe there's some fears that can be alleviated with some of that information for the students. And I would just like to add, you know, students have shared with me through forum discussions, this notion of their, their stress level and their feeling overloaded and overwhelmed and exhausted, and the emails that I get from students asking if we could maybe have a snow day because they're really exhausted right now and they could really use a day to sleep.
Just a day off.
Hmm. Yeah. It's a bigger issue than just in the context of Blizzard Bags, right? That's something that we need to continue to have dialogue with students around and look at potential ways that we can work to alleviate some of that stress level for them. So, Blizzard Bags aside, that, that is an issue that we definitely need to continue to look at.
Yes, but it did sound like with the high school, we talked to the teachers and the teacher that is helping, that they would like that to use that day as maybe just a continued day, like, here's an extra day, like, less of a, we're going to do a separate lesson and more of a, all right, you have, this is more now of an extra day to get all those assignments done or to, you know, maybe adding to it, you know, not adding to it, but just, that seemed like this, that was the, more they were interested in than like this separate piece on its own. They were more interested in just working it into their week. And because they're so digitally based already, it wasn't an issue for them like it would be for a kindergartner who's not using Google classrooms. I mean, they're so already online and turning things in and the high school teachers have much more of an ability to just shoot something out and say, you know, add to this or work on this, as opposed to that packet Blizzard Bag kind of thing.
Two things, I'm glad that we're continuing to explore, you know, stress and mental health in our students. And I'm grateful that this committee was willing to take the first steps in looking at the possibility. Because my thought is, even if we don't feel at the end of the day that this is right for our district, it's a question that many ask. So, we can say, we've done our due diligence, we've done our research, we looked at it, and it's, it's, it's right or not right. But if it's not, then we know we've done the legwork on it.
One question, because there are so many, I think, no matter how many, how much research we do, there's still going to be unknowns in there. So, I guess, my question is, how far do you want the research to go? Do you know what I mean? Like, do you want the research to go to a point that we almost have a Blizzard Bag curriculum in place so you can see what it looks like? Do you want it to be so like, okay, all these people are covered, we know what, you know how everyone's going to be covered? Do you know what I mean? Because there are a lot of unknowns.
Financials to me are the first thing, because...
Yeah, the first thing is the financials.
Because, so, that could end up being an insurmountable roadblock. So, no one should do more work beyond that?
Yeah.
You don't want to go off in another direction doing more work that may not yield us anything, absolutely.
So, basically, we need to see the financial implications with the unions and everything before we even task to go further and try to look into other people's programs and all that at this point. And we do, I mean, every time we talked about it, we came up with, and what about this person and what about that person? I mean, literally, it was like, you know, first we thought of Carol, and then we're like, oh, the school nurse, and then, and, you know, the custodians, the, you know, we just, we kept thinking of more and more people. So, I mean, it just keeps going and we understand that, and it has to work that way first before it can work any other way. But we also know that other schools do it, so obviously this has been done before and it's not, we wouldn't be the first people to try to make it happen. So, someone's had, you know, there has been districts that have had success with it and were able to negotiate and they figured out how to, I'm assuming they figured out how to deal with the cafeteria workers and the buses and so on and so forth.
So, maybe a next step would be for the committee to identify some districts that have implemented and either are continuing to implement Blizzard Bags or abandoned that notion, and find out all of our unknowns through their experience. In the meantime, I can have conversation with representatives from the different unions to see what they're thinking, they'd be looking for in terms of a negotiation around implementation of this and bring that back to you.
Do you think that should be a first step though?
I think that should be...
Rather than, rather than starting that work?
I think it should be simultaneous, because they may be able to find out some things that were workable.
Through other districts.
That I might be able to offer as information to the unions relative to how other districts have handled. So, I think it's okay for it to be a simultaneous effort.
You mentioned for the teachers, because in my eyes, the teachers creating the Blizzard Bags, grading the Blizzard Bags, preparing the Blizzard Bags, those are the teacher hours for that snow day, right? So, it's going to take me all that time to prepare, grade, and do all that sort of thing. In my mind, those are my snow day hours. I just did them over the summer, after school, whenever I did it to get with my teammates, make my, my project or whatnot. Those were my workday hours to cover that snow day. Does that make sense? So, that's how, that's how I was thinking of it.
Yeah, but I'm not sure everyone will think of it that way, because it's after six snow days. Okay, so you're going to put all that work into it, and then if we only have five snow days, you're never going to use your Blizzard Bag.
Well, that's just, that's just what the...
And that's the, that's the contractual thing that I'm thinking of, because some people will put all that work in and they'll be annoyed that they don't get to use their Blizzard Bag at all one year.
You could say three. I mean, you, it's ultimately a school committee's decision.
I know.
We're recommending it based on, but parents had three, most parents had three days.
Right.
Teachers are more towards the five, so that's just our recommendation. I mean, I personally think three days is great, because then we get some days off. But that's, that would ultimately be your guys' decision on whether it starts at six or whether it starts at three. And I think as long as it's clear, like, your message...
I understand what you're saying.
You know, Dr. Burnham's message would have to say, this is a Blizzard Bag day, this will not be made up. I mean, as long as it's super explicit to the lowest common denominator, that's kind of thing. But it's really up to you guys as to when it's implemented, and people might really like it and say, hey, we don't want to start it at six, we loved it.
But look at this year, how many snow days have we had so far?
I know.
No, I know, but...
Don't jinx me for tomorrow.
I was just going to say, man.
But I mean, in terms of Blizzard Bags, Heather's saying, you know, okay, look at this year, we've had one snow day.
This is a typical...
Those snow days, sorry, they're all delays.
Right.
So, we haven't needed Snow Bags, so teachers would be upset if they had to propel all the...
And I would, I would offer this, as a teacher, I always had to prepare materials for an emergency absence. Something may happen this evening and I can't be in tomorrow, but I didn't know I wasn't going to be in tomorrow. I didn't leave anything. Well, you have your emergency substitute day always ready to go. I may never use it.
Yeah.
That's how I am, that's why I think it's prepared.
But is that, is that sufficient for a Blizzard Bag based on the DSE?
If you have something that you've designed and you don't have the opportunity to use it?
I thought they were all project-based.
No, they don't. It just has to, it has to be...
Because that was a lot of the discussion.
It can't be rote.
It can't just be like, here's a couple of, yeah. That's what we talked about, that's why, because...
Interestingly, something teachers and students alike, they are both like, well, we don't want busy work. And our response was, then don't do that.
Right.
Then don't give busy work. Like, there's certainly plenty of work where, you know, we're teachers, but we can't talk, you can't talk to a kid 50 minutes in a row, they won't hear you for the last half. So, there is time for independent, you know, they have to practice what, what you've taught them. So, and that's only, you know, not to say that they couldn't look something up online or, or, it could be research, it could be a project, it could be reading, it could be a different array of things. It could, it could be make a snowman and measure it, or, you know...
Make a scale, yeah, right, yeah.
Shovel, count 10 shovels and see how high the pile is. I mean, there's a lot of things, you know, you can do that are not project-based too, that just can be any day.
And it depends on the age level too.
And also to your original statement of, would we resent, I would never resent being prepared for something. Like, it might not be that year, but I'm never going to be like, oh, no, I don't, like, it did get used. I'd be like, oh, I already did that work, I don't have to do that work again later unless I want to, I can tweak it, like, we always tweak things. But like, if it's not used a year, then yay, we didn't have six snow days, you know, it's, it's already, I did the work, you know, you do the work, it's, I don't know, it's here later.
But that's not every...
No, I was just going to say...
But you're never going to please everybody.
I mean, it's, you're not going to get every parent, every student, every teacher to think this is a good idea, and you're also not going to get them to agree that it's not. I mean, there's always going to be someone that's unhappy.
Well, I think that was part of it too, that we, like Mrs. Altonwell said, we kind of just took the input from the surveys, considered some of the feedback, and based on that said, what would be a logical next step to explore would be to pilot some days because maybe that would put an end to it, or maybe people would embrace it, but instead of going one whole way or the other, that's what the committee was recommending. We definitely agree, there are a lot of fine details that would need to be worked out.
Which is why we did the two as well, so this way it wasn't overwhelming, so like, we may, you know, in the future, you guys may decide you have three or four, whatever you decided, but two seems like, and there's enough time to get that survey out and say, what didn't work? Like, it was too much, it was too little, it was too hard, it was too easy, and then everybody could kind of get their feedback and then try again. And maybe it would be better, maybe it wouldn't. You know, that would be for everybody to decide.
In the, in the surveys, what was your participation level with the parents, the responders? How many, like, in Turkey Hill, what was the percentage of parents who responded to your survey? Do you know that? Like, was it 50%? Was it 25%? Was it 100%?
No, nothing.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, like, I just want to know, because...
It was definitely a good percentage, Annika has the...
Because that's kind of skews the data, if we don't know what the percentage of...
And for reasons that we are, we don't know, the middle school and the high school students were not part of the second survey, and we don't know why.
No.
For whatever reason.
So, we don't have the percentages, but the number of respondents, so for example, Lunenburg High staff, 34, this was the original survey with the questions, not the second one we sent out to ask if people were in favor of the pilot. 42 middle school staff members, 23 Turkey Hill, and then for Lunenburg Middle School students, 190 of them, so that's...
About half, isn't it? That's half?
Probably around, yeah. Turkey Hill respondents, 184.
That's without the third grade.
No, no third grade.
That was just fourth and fifth.
Which is about most.
But parents, I just want to know about parents.
Yep, I'm sorry, let me just... Lunenburg High School parents, 204 originally. Lunenburg Middle School parents, 199. Turkey Hill parents, 159. Primary school parents, 178. And then Lunenburg High School students, 156. But some of our thinking too is that this original survey, you know, people have, there had been a lot of talk following this, so that was why we sent out the second survey, because we thought minds might have been changed.
That's what, about quarter of the parents, 20 to 25% sounds like?
Well, maybe, yeah.
25... I'd say it was more than that.
50, maybe 50%.
Yeah, about 50% in every building.
And it was like, so, so I got three surveys, because I have three schools, so like, I, I was able to, I answered for my high school or my middle school, and I could only answer for one Turkey Hill, I was not able to do my two kids in Turkey Hill. But, you know, so, people, like I said, I have, I'm on three of those numbers, so you did get it for each building, because, you know, my opinion on it is a little different, my concerns are different for a third grader and a ninth grader. So, you did get the chance to answer for all your students too, which was nice.
Oh, wait, shall we wait till she comes back?
So...
I don't know how far she went.
So, the suggested next step then, from Dr. Burnham, is that this group would meet again, or we could probably divvy through email or something and dig into different districts that have done this. And she would be able to attack the financial end of it a little bit.
Yeah.
And then we would be able to come back with that to you, and we can decide at that point whether to move forward or not.
How many districts would, like, what, what parameter, how many, about how many districts would we want? Does it matter? Does it have to be like districts or can it just be districts?
I would, I would think similar districts.
Similar districts would be better.
You try to go similar, but you know...
If possible.
And like, how many, what kind of like sample, size, sample size would you ultimately have?
I'm not sure about the sample size, but Dr. Burnham had a good, good suggestion about ones that did successfully do it, ones that are in process of implementing, for some that have abandoned the idea after you've tried a pilot or not. I think having those as, as different viewpoints can help inform our decisions.
Do you think a handful of districts, like five, is a reasonable number to get enough sampling of what's going on?
How many do we know that are actually participating in this program right now? Do we, do we have a number?
Across the state, I have no idea.
Little Sex, Burlington was a big one.
Gateway does, I don't know who else, but I can call DESI and see if they will tell me.
It'd be a good idea in this area, because they would have the same number of snow days.
It would be a good idea if it was in this area, if we could find those people.
Regardless of the number of snow days, the kinds of glitches, the nuances...
Should be the same.
Would be the same. How did you handle your obligation from your nursing staff, from your food services, from your paraprofessionals? That's a commonality, regardless of the number of snow days you might have or the number of students you might have in the district. So, I think whatever information we can get would be beneficial.
Okay.
And then I can have conversations with different representatives from the unions.
Would you guys want to send us questions to, you know, Carol, what exactly, like, if there's specific things you'd like us to find out so we can know we're targeting exactly, you know, we can, we can, obviously, there's things that we know.
Yeah, we can generate, but if there's something specific.
Yeah, so there's something specific, and we can figure out a bunch of them, but like, if there's something specific that you're looking for, it would be nice to know, just so we're not assuming that we're asking something and that's not what you were looking for. You want something additional to what we're, you know...
But the list...
Right, we'll go with that list, but then, if there's additional... Additional.
That you guys are particularly interested in that we didn't think of. Because like I said, every time we met, we could think of more, different, or.
Okay.
Yep. So, I need a motion. We need to, we need to continue, yeah. Well, it was an action item, wasn't it? It's an action item.
Well, if, if we require a motion.
No, it's not, it's a discussion.
Okay, so we don't need any.
Okay.
I think it's like an interim presentation, we can assume that.
Okay.
We'll be back for part two.
All right, I'll be in touch.
But thank you for, thank you for the work so far.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Get this information.
Okay, what's next? Marijuana.
I'm sure.
Okay.
This one's, this one isn't doing it.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Carol.
Just a little bit.
Um, so the next item on the agenda is the cannabis regulation by law review. Did everyone take a look at that?
I did.
I received it from Mr. Bernie, and he wanted everyone in all the committees to look at it and just review it. The only thing that I.
Kind of feedback was he looking for from this?
Well, just, I don't know, but the one thing that I noticed that was, 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 okay, where is it? Okay, it's under, and it's a Mass General Law, general requirements for marijuana establishments. And number four, where'd it go?
Let me get to it.
Four pursuant to MGL and all of this, marijuana establishment shall not be located within 500 feet of pre-existing public or private school providing education in kindergarten or any grades 1 through 12, pre-existing small, large group childcare facilities licensed by the Commonwealth, or within 250 feet of pre-existing family childcare providers licensed by the Commonwealth.
Yep.
I thought, you know, I know that's their requirement, and it, but it seems kind of close.
250 feet is very far.
Not very far at all.
All right, but, and, and I agree. And, and through the zoning.
Yeah.
They're allowed, they can put these establishments in different locations far away from the school. So if you look at how they put the zoning and you look at the map.
Yeah.
They're very far away from any school.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that, that's the way that I'm, I'm looking at the map, is that they're all very far away from.
Do you have the map on here? Where's the map? Where'd you get the map?
I got a map.
Okay, well, I went to the website and pulled it off of the website, and made the actual thing from the planning board site. So these.
Send me a map.
So these, the setback, the zoning districts, you know, R, A, R, B, O, those are, there's a map that are color-coded. And so this is pretty much where these are.
So there can't be one like right over there, from teen center?
Well, it depends on the establishment that you're looking at.
Mm-hmm, that's what, like, right here in the center of town.
So, and, and so that is the, that's.
From our school.
Let me see if I can find the map.
That's the, that's the situation that would concern me, is that one going right here. They walk right down and over. Teen Center is right there.
Right, so I, they did, I know that they did talk about the teen center as well, and in the planning board meetings, because I did attend a couple of those meetings. Because I want to be informed. And the, and relative to this particular one, on the 25th, in this building, I think it's at seven, is the public hearing for those, for those bylaws. They're going to present at town meeting. Let's see here. Boy, it's different on a mobile device.
Certainly is.
Board's commissions. So on the planning board website, there's a, a link for draft marijuana bylaw.
Isn't it Lunenburg, town Lunenburg?
No, it wasn't on that. I looked up the map elsewhere. I did look up the map though on the, on the, on the planning board website. I just have to remember where the map is. I'll have to see if I can find that link from home, and then I can send that to you.
Zoning map, hold on.
Yeah, oh yeah, zoning map, there it is. It says it, right?
It says it right there. Okay, so which color coding?
All right, so, schools are in the.
Red? Are you saying the school is in the red?
Mostly, well, that's the Village Center.
That's Village Center, right? Okay.
So schools are mostly in the yellow, the residential A district.
Oh, right over here, okay, yep.
So then if you flip over to the bylaw or suggestions, the only thing that they could have in residential A would be a marijuana cultivator, which is somebody who can
Grow it.
Cultivate, process and package, potentially. And it's by special permit, so based on whatever the Mass General Law is and the setbacks. Now if we, if you think that 500 is too low, then, then bring that to the planning board. But it's based on special permit, so.
Okay.
It's, as I read this, I'm certainly no expert on what they've done.
But I still thought 250 and 500 feet were relatively close, even if they're cultivating.
Um, so setbacks from, yeah.
I, I just think, you know, you can walk down.
Well, and.
And somebody can be cultivated.
So, under, under the commission rules, as I understood it, a person could grow their own in their backyard and up at the school. So, you can put, grow your own in your own backyard up to, I think, 12 plants or something. I don't know the number.
Those that are for commercial use and dispensary.
And these are for commercial purposes. So, one of the farmers down the street who wants to start cultivating in their yard, they'd have to get, or they'd have to get a special permit. There's so much.
Red tape?
Well, there's a lot of red tape. You've gotta have security. You've gotta have it in, secured. It's gotta be indoors. You can't let the smell of marijuana waft around.
The smell of scum.
Well, but a plant smells like a plant until it's burned.
Right. I don't know if they're talking about the plant or the smell of the aroma.
All right. So, again, watching the planning board meetings, they, they took in a lot of that into account, the various steps that people would have to go through to be able to do this at a larger scale as a cultivator. And they still have to get licensed and. But 500 feet is pretty close.
It is.
Well, is that feedback that we could give?
Yeah.
That, that.
Yeah, I just want, I wanted to make sure there was consensus. Did you see anything else in there?
Uh, there were just a couple of things that I, I wanted them to clarify when, when I went to the public hearing as a citizen.
Yeah.
On the 25th, there was just, you know, for me, the smell of marijuana, that, a plant smells like a plant. What kind of odor are you talking about? Are you talking about burning it or?
Well, yeah.
Right, so, I, I would just, you know, you know how like, things be clear in regulations.
Well, and I, I just assumed it was the burning scent.
Well, that, yeah, I assumed that too, but they're talking about the processing, so what is.
Oh, I wonder what's happening.
Is there, yeah, so, there were just a couple of little tiny questions like that, and I saw a couple of typos that.
Okay.
No biggie, but.
But nothing else for the school committee?
Nothing really for the school committee. I think the, the, yeah.
Proximity.
Just based on the, on the conversations that I heard, it's not like they're gonna put one in the, any. So the, the selling places are not anywhere near the RAs, right? So those are.
What color are the selling areas?
Okay, so the selling areas, the, the manufacturer retailers are in the commercial district, looks like. C-O-P-I-N. So that's over by like Summer Street.
Gray.
For retailer.
Okay, purple, okay. This is purple.
Which probably doesn't like make people over there.
This is right near the primary school.
And so they.
Did you see? Did you see the ones right on Mass Ave?
So the commercial.
Right here.
Which would be the corner of Towns and Harbor and Route 2A.
Potentially, they could put something in there, yes.
So 500 feet's feeling a bit close. Is there a number that's far enough?
A mile? Two miles, five miles, the whole.
Not in between our. It's uncomfortable to walk.
It shouldn't be located in between.
I was gonna say, that is the two schools.
The two schools.
Like so near all of our campuses.
This is the primary school, right here. See that little, that's the driveway. And then this is the high school. And this is where they all, they could technically walk down there from the high school and then walk back.
And that's the commercial area?
Yes.
That is one of multiple commercial areas.
It's the one that would be the.
The closest.
The closest to the schools. There's this down here.
The other ones are logistically a little farther. That one's not.
That's not that far either, Chestnut. They could, that's right near.
And that's by the Bonjour School too, preschool.
And this is, and it's not 250 feet away. Well, it might be.
I'm sure it is.
And this is the, um.
250 feet's not that far.
The park is. This is where they play baseball.
Oh, Marshall?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could.
This is down the street.
That's really close. It's at Bandit Chestnut.
That's right down the street there, Meredith.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're gonna have to.
And where's the, the new playground?
Over here somewhere. Where's Whalum?
Yeah, is that near any of this?
Whalum. Yeah, over here.
Right there.
Right there. Right in that big center of purple. Okay.
So, I guess, is this a discussion or action?
No, this was discussion. So now we have to figure out how to write.
Put together feedback for.
Yeah.
Mr. Bernie.
So we'll do that, we should do that the next meeting to.
Um, yeah, because the public hearing is February 25th.
So we'd have to before the next meeting. We're not, yeah, we're not meeting next week.
I don't think we can. We don't have a quorum.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Um, I don't think we will. Jim is gone, and there is a conflict with competitive class plays.
There is a conflict with competitive class plays. I know of that.
Do you have a student in competitive class?
I do.
And so do I. So that's three down, two left.
All righty then.
So we cannot have, when is the 25th?
Since this was on the agenda as a discussion point, we moved to, we moved to, can we vote to vote?
To vote to vote, yeah. You wanna vote to vote, so that I can.
So, I'll make a motion that we allow further discussion to vote, to allow the chair to respond to Mr. Bernie.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I will, I will draft something and then.
So, so I guess now we can discuss what we would like.
What would you want me to include in that?
The proximity of the commercial districts to all of our campuses.
And the playgrounds.
As well as, as well as town playground. They're not town playgrounds per se, but they are playgrounds.
The parks and play, parks and playgrounds?
Marshalls, Marshall Park. Marshall Park.
Where kids hang out.
And Wallace Park and Whalum.
Wallace Park, that's.
So those are all places that kids go.
At concern.
Okay. I will do that then. Okay.
Was there anything else that we wanted to include in those concerns?
That was my biggest.
I think the other concern that you had was the 500 foot setback.
It was 500 for schools, 250 for.
250 for, as a child.
And I think that ties into what we were saying, is that those minimum, those are, those are minimums. It doesn't mean.
Right, but did you see anything?
Minimum, yes, according to state law. We could draft it differently entirely, but the minimum of, according to state law.
The minimums concern us in general and the proximity of the commercial districts.
So, they, they have residential setbacks set at, for retailer, 250 feet. So all marijuana establishments supposed to be setback from any pre-existing residential use at 250 feet. I don't think they dress school anywhere else.
No, it was just that one.
Except that one from the state.
Yeah, that was it.
And it just tells us what Mass General Law says.
It's a residential 250, that over near Whalum. The park might be, but. I don't know. I don't have my tape measure. I don't either. 250 feet is not very far. It's not very far at all.
So you have to, if the concern is the 500 feet from a school and 250 from a family childcare provider.
Yes.
Is too short.
Too short. And that and the proximity of the commercial areas to the school campus.
To all of our school campuses, Marshall Park and Wallace Park.
Yep. Okay, I will include that.
So then, based on that, I would make a motion to authorize you to
Right.
Provide that feedback to the.
Second.
Land use director.
Okay. Wendy seconded it. Everyone's in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Now on to, oh, action item, school choice for 2019, 2020.
Okay. So taking a look at class sizes across the district, the only place that we feel that we have available space would be at the high school.
Right.
Looking at class sizes across all grades at the high school, we feel that we could comfortably accommodate as many as 20 per grade in total.
So a total of 80 students?
A total of 80 students.
And currently.
And I notice you use the word comfortably.
Yes. So if you were to take a look at current class sizes and add that many students, our class sizes still remain below 25 students per class.
And that's even with those bubble classes of, is that?
Yeah, so the interesting thing about high school is that kids come in and then their, their pathways diverge a bit, right? With the electives that they can take, and some kindos doubling up on math classes in a given year or sciences and so on. So, you know, when they're in the, the elementary grades, they, they travel and they're with one teacher for the duration of the day, so the class size is, is pretty much set. But with variation in level of courses, course options, electives, core classes and the like, you can absorb the number of students within the context of your entire schedule.
So that would be 47 more choice students than what we currently have in the high school.
And do we have a feel for the needs of those 80, I'm assuming that some of them are going to need Paris and support?
So we took a look at some of the data and I dropped a, a bit of information into the folder. When we take a look at the students that we have currently that are choice students, very, very few of them are actually students with IEPs. We took a look at discipline data. There, there are a couple of students who have had suspensions, but not an extraordinary number comparatively speaking. And we took a look at their involvement in the school in terms of, do they participate in athletics? And with the class sizes at the high school, how they can have varying levels, are there, just from my understanding, maximums for a class? Like, say, everybody wants to take biology, you know, is there a max size for the different courses? There are some classes that everybody's gonna have to take. Biology as an example is a core course, right? Ceramics II is not a core course. There is going to be a max. Ceramics 2 is not a core course. There is going to be a maximum number of students that can take an elective offering like that.
But what about the core ones? Are they gonna get overloaded with?
No. No. I know that there, you know, was some concern relative to would adding additional students impact. Um, our ability to provide electives. I'm going to tell you that undoubtedly staff cuts are going to impact our ability. To provide students with a, you know, a nice range of elective offerings. Um, additional students, not so much. Will every student get every elective that they would like to take? No, but that's gonna happen even if you don't have a choice.
That happens no matter what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you can see the, the trend over time. We lose a good number more students to choice leaving the district than we take in.
Why is that?
That's an excellent question.
Because that was, if we wouldn't need to have choice students if we retained our own students. That is the real question. There are 90, you have on there 90, I was reading that entirely wrong. And that's even more upsetting now that I'm reading it correctly, that, where is it?
Of how many are outgoing?
Yeah. And we had asked for years for her to give us that data and she never get, provided it. Because that is the, the question is why are we losing students? Other charter schools are different.
That's different.
And that's not as meant, that's not, that does not speak to the 98 students.
Right.
We are not losing 98 to charter schools in the area.
It would be nice to have an exiting survey that people who choose to, to choice out.
Just some.
It's just nice information to have.
I would think. I believe that.
What, what would have you?
Started with that, wasn't there?
I thought she did, but.
It's not the first time we've brought that up.
This, because that's the, to me, that is the question. I would rather see us retain our residential students. Than to have students come in from out of district in Lunenburg. Especially adding 47 more to the high school. That is a large number.
There very well could be things that we can't provide, that that's what they need to go for, but there could be reasons that we could retain them as well.
Yes, I, I know several that left for specific teaching reasons, like that could have been fixed.
Well. If you think of it, our schools are not a business, but if you think of it from a business perspective. Customer service is key. So we do a lot with surveys now, more than we used to. So I don't know if there's a way to sort of. Work with that, just to see, is there something within our district? Are we seeing common themes? And if we are, are the things that can be addressed?
Sure.
I think the idea of a survey is, is a good one, and I think we need to know why kids are leaving the district. But since the space is there and we know that our budget is going to be not exactly what we had hoped for. I think we need to take that amount of students.
In the high school, you think we need 47 more students in the high school? We just had to add lockers last year because we didn't have enough lockers for our middle school. Do we have enough lockers? Are our students gonna have to share lockers with choice students? Do we have that kind of space, that space?
I can verify that, but I can tell you also that in reality. Um, students at the high school don't use their lockers. They carry their things with them.
Mine does.
She uses her locker every day. So does my son. Does yours?
She, mine carries her stuff. I tell her all the time, put stuff in your locker.
Right.
She never, doesn't use it.
They just carry it all with them. That I can find out for you.
But that is something that we are required to provide, is a locker.
Correct.
So, are we in a, just if we were, and by the way, that does not necessarily mean we're gonna meet those 80. Are we turn, like, I don't know if we were turning away other students in previous years. Do you know that?
I know that we, um, we receive requests frequently. I have received two directly to me in the last week. So I know that there's interest from folks outside.
Mm-hmm, yep. So in addition to the push that we have to start a school year, there's some that come in throughout the school year as well. Which if we had spots still open, then they could be offered.
Right, which is why when you see the numbers that say projected, they aren't final yet. We have to report the numbers. Um, so that number is a little bit fluid. We might see some change between now and June. Which is why you see it listed as projected.
Last year, we were told that, um, on the freshman level, we, we were told there was no. Not to have choice students by both the superintendent and the high school principal at that time, in that grade level.
And based on core requirements for the ninth grade, maybe that made sense for the incoming, um, class last year. It's not the case this year.
I wonder, was that a bubble year?
That is a bubble year. And so is the seventh grade class that will be coming up to eighth, that goes to eighth grade is a bubble year.
But it's something that we look at every year. What, what we do year to year does not have to be exactly the same.
But once they're in, they're in.
Well, they are, but if those grade levels can accommodate them, we, we don't typically see. Big upticks, big upticks within a year, say 10th grade to 11th grade, do we?
You mean with residents moving into town, registrations?
Yes.
Usually high schools are pretty stable.
I'm thinking, I was gonna say, you know, junior, senior are probably the least, you know. Favorable years from a student perspective to switch schools.
Too, as well? Senior students.
So you have some students currently that would become seniors next year, not totaling 20.
Right.
So potentially, again, just because you open the seats doesn't necessarily mean that they will be filled.
That, that was my.
Right.
I don't think we need, I think that's a large amount of new students to come into the district in one sweep. We have never opened up to that. It was 10.
Yeah.
11. I think one, in the 10th grade, the sophomore class, we had opened it up to like eight and then. Because only 11, like 11 people were interested, so we, we said it was okay. Yeah, we would just. We just said, okay, we'll approve, um, the additional ones that were interested. Um, but we have never, um, approved this large number of choice students. And I'm not saying that that many would apply, but I'm just saying that's a huge influx of new students for our, um, staff. And I, and I don't wanna get rid of staff, I just, um. I, I just think that, especially at the high school level, that's going to be.
When we opened those seats to the 10 and 11, it was usually just particular grade levels. I don't even recall that.
It was one grade level.
We had all the grade levels available.
It's one grade level a year. We open up to freshmen.
But I'm wondering if there were people that were interested at the other grade levels that were just told no, that we maybe weren't aware of. Cause if there aren't spots, then.
No, yeah, most of the time, people are only interested in coming into high school when you're starting high school. So they come at freshman year. Which is why we opened it up at freshman year.
Right.
But we allow people who move out of town to stay in the district, starting into 10th grade. Yes.
Would 20 at the freshman and smaller numbers at the others be more?
I'm, I don't know, I'm.
Appealing, I guess is the word I'm looking for.
I feel so uncomfortable with that.
I'm at 15 at the freshman and 10 at the others. See if anyone's interested. Cause again, the slots are there, but not taken, then they're just there.
So I, I heard a question, if, has anybody been turned away in the past?
Yes.
At what number?
What grade?
I don't know how many in total have been turned away. I know that.
No, I mean, at, so was it like, we had 10 spots open and somebody else? Or do, do we know that information?
That does happen. Um, I don't have that data for you this evening. As I said, I had two inquiries in the last week. And my response is that we don't, we're not currently accepting school choice.
But we have the capacity, classroom capacity to deal with it, maybe not the logistical capacity. Not say that we'll have 80 new students on Monday. Well, the following Monday. I'm. I don't feel overly concerned about possibly adding more students to the, to the student body. If, if we can accommodate them. And safely, and it's not putting in an undue strain on our existing resources. I don't necessarily have a problem with that. Or at least opening it up to allow for.
I think this is the first time though that we heard the number, and I don't think that, I think that we need to, I think we're gonna have feedback on this. From parents in town.
Because they like the small class size?
Well, I can tell you right now that given the, um, budget forecast. Those class sizes are not going to remain that size. They, there's no way. We'll get to it shortly, where we talk about the implications. If, if we have to meet the town manager's recommended guideline budget of 2.5%. We will be making some significant cuts. Perhaps what we can do at this point is, maybe if you're in agreement that we're open to. Accepting some school choice grades nine through 12 for next year. As we take a look at the more detailed information and make decisions about specific positions that would be cut. What that impact would look like in terms of class size and class offering, and then maybe narrow to a more detailed.
Number.
Number of this many ninth grade, this many 10th, 11th, 12th, along with this series of staffing cuts. Is what we think is a good balance, so that we can. Live within the, the guidelines that have been provided to us and still have some revenue source. To maintain some of. What we offer currently. Because if we are committed, um, to phasing out school choice over the next couple of years. Because literally that's all it would take, is another couple of years and we would have no students of school choice. Then all of the. Ways that we utilize school choice funds. Would then have to be absorbed into the budget, which means additional staffing cuts. A year or two down the road, just to make up this lost revenue.
Thinking of it like a business.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
So would the committee be in favor of. Open to. School choice at the high school level? And when we come back the first meeting in March with the specific details of which positions we would be cutting. Coupled with what we think we can still manage to accommodate for, for a number of students at the high school. I'm not opposed to, to school choice. I, this is the first time we've discussed the numbers in, in that way. So a little more time and information and processing would probably be beneficial.
I'm fine with it.
The eighth grade class. I just wish I knew the class size of the incoming freshman. I know it's not as big as the seventh grade class.
Do you know that?
127?
It's fairly small.
I don't have the exact number. In front of me, I can't even look it up. But it is on the smaller side.
And knowing that some of those students will go to Monty Tech.
Exactly. See, that could.
On average, we have about 20 students.
Annually go.
Annually go to Monty Tech.
Size is 120.
And, and looking at this year's freshman class, I know that that 20 translated pretty close.
Yeah.
I would tell you that grade eight currently has 127 students. Two of those students are school choice.
And how was that?
At one point, you must have, must have allowed them and they've.
It was when they were in, yeah, yep.
127. If 20 of them leave, that's 107. And that leaves up, that class size would have the biggest choice possibility of all the high school.
What did though?
Well, the ni, the current ninth graders have zero at school choice right now at 126.
Because their class was 150 something before.
They were 148 or so at the end. So about 20.
See, I think, yeah. And I think bringing them in at the younger grades is better than having them come into the senior class. I think.
Yeah, and even if you open seats at the senior class, doesn't necessarily mean that you're gonna get.
Doesn't mean you're gonna get that. I think that's probably the class you're least likely to see.
And I wouldn't even open it up to 20 kids in that class, in the incoming, the senior class.
There's more VHS, there's more, there are more different alternate study possibilities.
That all of your current seniors are going to get all the electives they need to graduate.
Well, that, that is true.
And that's where the senior year becomes tricky. Okay? And that's why I said you should just take it off the, it should be ninth, 10th and 11th. Because those seniors that are currently in our school need to be, take priority to get their graduation requirements in. Some of them will have to take gym next year. Some of them probably have art. Some, you know. It, it's just very important that our resident seniors take priority. Now, I'm not, I don't think that we should take the other classes off the block at all. I just think that there's, they have to fulfill how many elective requirements when they graduate.
We just did this.
Yeah, we did, right? It's like four, what is it? It's, it's.
But the current school choice people still get to continue on. I see there are 10, 11th graders.
Absolutely, no, yes. Yeah, they're already in. They were, they came in the, in freshman year. They've been here with us the entire, they're part of their class. So they're, they're, they would also have to meet, they would also have to get their requirements in.
Right.
Wouldn't they be scheduled first?
I would think.
You would have kids first?
Yes, but if you add, if you add more seniors to that. I, I don't know. It's hard.
You'd have those seniors after.
After our seniors.
After our seniors have already selected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah, because the high school starts selecting soon.
Right.
Selection is, yeah.
That, and then, I don't, it's just.
You'd open it up, but it would be after our seniors have already.
Right, selected their courses.
But it also should, you know, but then it might screw up some of the other grade levels that come in, the, those seniors would. All of the grades are now just gonna start selecting. So if someone is, right, right? If you, your kid is now in an elective and a senior choice student comes in new and needs that elective. Your child could be bumped into a study.
At what point do these choice students opt to come into the school? After we've already done our choices?
Oh, they could come in anytime.
But I mean, for this next school year, is that what you're saying?
It would be the next school year, yeah. They don't, they wouldn't just. They don't, they wouldn't just start this year, they would come in the next school year.
Right, so our, our student, our resident students would have already selected.
Well, over the summer. That doesn't mean they won't be bumped over the summer. Have, you've never had a cla, your child's class schedules change?
I can't recall that.
Over the class of this, oh, yeah.
I'm sure it's happened.
Yeah.
I think the number of seniors you would get would be very, very small, so I would be fine with just saying nine, ten, myself. You know, I don't think you'd get enough seniors to make a difference, unless there's something I don't know about, which wouldn't be the first time.
My line.
If we need forty-seven more to hit the eighty, correct? Thirty-three, forty-seven to hit eighty. Thirty-three is what we have. Forty-seven more to hit eighty choice students. And we had put twenty in eighth, going into ninth, right, freshman, twenty.
Yeah, fine.
Then there's seventeen left. That you could put in the other three.
So you could do eight or, eight or nine, if you just did.
You could do eight, or in nine, and then you'd have no seniors.
So like I said, let, let us take a look at which staffing positions we feel we would need to cut to reach that 2.5%. And then see what that does.
Right.
In terms of, you know, sections, of courses, electives, that sort of thing, and just double-check that, you know.
The numbers are right.
The numbers can work.
Okay.
So would we make a motion to, to postpone doing that, to voting on that now till after the discussion, or to another meeting?
Well, oh, no, we're gonna postpone it till another meeting, when she has that information to show us.
I'm anticipating coming back to you, the first meeting in March, with the details of whatever cuts we think we would have to make.
And.
So a motion to table that.
Yes.
Decision until.
We get more.
More information.
Make sense?
Okay.
Okay.
One more second, ma'am.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Disposal of old high school banners. Mr. Londa, are you gonna talk to us about that? There's a long list.
There is one.
These old banners.
Yes, yes.
No, yes, tell us how you think you want to dispose of them.
So, the banners, so the, high school replaced what they had in the old high school with a new set of banners, kind of a different approach, where they're really focusing on teams and team awards, and, and before we were focused, I think, on a combination of team awards.
Yeah.
And annual awards. So we had a lot of banners, and we're also gonna be continuing to generate lots of banners. So the, the ones that were replaced have room for a, a year logo to go down, and so we should, we will still be adding some new banners, I am sure, but probably not a whole lot of them. And those are all, the new ones are all up. So this is, we've been storing the old ones for the last two and a half years, so we're at the point where we'd like to try to move these out, but we know that there might be some interest for some people, for some of these banners, because there are some that have, that are individual style banners, like the thousand point banner, says four, five people that are on there, specific names, might be interested in that one. So this, of course, came out of the high school, it has been through all the schools, no one here, none of the schools have expressed an interest in them, so if the school committee is willing to allow for, for them to, they moved out, we'll offer them to the town, which they probably really won't need or want, and then we would look, probably look to do a, some kind of a sealed bid, one way or another, to, to get them, a chance to get them out of there. And then whatever is not sold, would likely, we would try to do some kind of recycling with it, because it is fabric.
Oh, right, okay.
And then to try to dispose of them, and then get them out of the storage area, and get either in somebody's hands, or into some way they can kind of get reused.
Are there photographs or ways that the public can see what these banners look like, and refresh their memory if they might be interested in them?
So we have, so we have a written description of what's on the banner, and when we, we'd put it out, we, we probably would allow for at least one day for people to come look at these.
Right.
We, we probably also try to include a photo of a generic banner. They're not all, they're all kind of a lot of different sizes, but they're generally around four foot by six foot. And, but, you know, that was what our, our thoughts were on this, was to get them out there, get into people's hands if they are interested in them, but also to kind of clear some space out of the storage room for, for other things that we do have need to store.
And we have plenty of need to store.
Yeah.
Anything we, we get in the way of sales, typically, my experience over the last twenty years, is that anything we sell winds up going back to the town as general fund revenue.
Oh, okay, goes back into the general fund? The town general fund?
Yes.
We could still have a conversation with the town manager about that, maybe.
I would think, because we would want.
Be worth a try.
Yeah.
Especially with our 2.5%.
Mm-hmm.
Perhaps. Trade a percent for a banner.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay, so, do we need to make a motion?
We do.
If I recall correctly, when we had the new school committee, there was a subgroup of.
Yes, and they have already moved all that stuff.
And they've already, they've basically signed off on this as well.
Yeah. That was different, because those, those, those were trophies and everything, they're displayed right now in the new building.
So they've, they've chosen everything that needed to be displayed, and then we did get the new banners.
This is additional, yeah, and we got new banners.
Right.
So this, this is the old, old stuff.
Some of those are very old.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve the disposal of high school banners as outlined and planned by Mr. Londa.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was the easiest one of the night.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, open space. Did everyone review the additions?
I didn't see any changes.
I didn't see any changes.
I keep looking at it, it's just me going.
Okay, all right. Well, let's table that.
Were there changes?
I thought he included the changes, but there might not have been.
If you have a document that's been changed, send it to me, and I'll make sure I get it to the next one.
And then we'll do it for the next meeting, okay?
Okay.
We missed their.
It's helpful if they're highlighted, redlined, or page numbers.
Okay.
Well, can I look specifically at the things that we talked about?
Yes.
Like the.
And he said he was.
The skate park.
Yeah.
Line was still there as part of this, under the school property.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna.
So I didn't see a change, and I thought you had had it on the, on the agenda, because he was going to come, talk to us.
And last time.
And he didn't come last time.
And then he did, he's.
And, okay, so.
So we'll just postpone that to the next meeting. Okay, fiscal year nineteen and twenty budget update, is Mr. Cassidy gonna come in?
Yes.
Mr. Cassidy, my god, this terrible budget.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You should have received a, an update on the FY nineteen budget.
Yeah.
Let me get right to the, the two outstanding issues in the budget. We've, currently, we have two negative balances. One, you've already taken care of with that transfer tonight. The second is our unemployment costs, which continues to grow. We did appeal the, the unemployment claim of one employee that left the district. We lost that claim, we are going in for another appeal for that, for the, to recoup some of those costs. At this time, I would like to let that, that balance go until we know what the actual cost is, and then we'll go in for a complete transfer. This money, we'll locate some money to cover that, that negative balance, but I'll keep you updated as we, as we move forward. I would just like the committee to accept this report as a report of progress.
I'll make a motion to approve the FY nineteen and FY twenty budget.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy.
Thank you.
Mr. Cassidy, it's so much easier to read with the highlighted.
Yes.
That was another thing.
It would probably drove you crazy, but it's, it's really easier to read.
Okay, it, it is raw data, and I just formatted it a little bit differently. If, once again, if you have any other suggestions on the presentation of that, to make it look easier to, to get the information, please let me know, send me an email.
The only thing I can think of is, we've converted to PDF, and if we can do a landscape instead of.
Right, because it's cock, it's cockeyed on ours.
Yeah, I, I'll learn how to do that, okay? That came up another time with the script.
It's only because it's weird, and then you can't see as much of it.
Yeah, okay.
On the P.
Yeah, that's, that's an old business manager trick, right? I'm sorry.
That's just a tiny thing, the rest of it is.
No, it's great.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll work on that for the next report, I promise. Okay, so FY twenty budget. So let's take a step back, let's go through the timeline. So the superintendent presented her budget in late December to the committee. In early January, we met with the, the town manager, and she gave us a guideline budget of 2.5% addition to our FY nineteen budget. One thing that wasn't mentioned, Dr. Burnham, and I just want to make sure that the committee is aware that you did make presentations to the, the middle school and high school staff, and also the primary in Turkey Hill staff, presented the, basically made the presentation that she made to you, to them. I, I thought that we got some good feedback from the staff on that, so. And then in addition, we had that one day of community forum. So I, so it's, it's getting out there, people are getting aware of, of where these numbers are coming from, and what our needs are. So let's talk about where we are right now, and I know Dr. Burnham talked about the unknowns. There were a lot of unknowns in December. As time rolls on, they, the unknowns go away. We still have some, but things are becoming more clear. So what's more clear? Right now, it looks like our insurance costs are gonna be increased by five percent next year, a maximum of five percent. We had budgeted eight percent in the, in the budget in December, so there's a little bit of savings right there. And once again, the, our guideline budget from the town manager is 2.5%. We still have a couple unknowns, which is our transportation budget for next year, that bid will be open on February twenty-first, and our enrollment for next year in our kindergarten program. And I, I think that'll be more clear by the first meeting in March, or at least the second meeting. So with the, the guideline budget established by the town manager, and the proposed superintendent budget, we're talking about a gap of about $600,000. And we estimate that, that that's potentially nine full-time equivalents in our budget. That, that means nine people potentially losing their jobs, but we're also hiring for other ones to, it's, it's kind of adjusting our operational budget to the needs of the That, that's not the best news, but let's talk about the governor's budget. The governor's budget came out at late January, and our chapter seventy funds increased $201,000, which is a little disappointing. It's a, it's a 2.67% increase from last year. Now, the year before that, we got a 3.6%, and the year before that, and I, I don't know why, we got a 14.5% increase. So it's one of the lowest increases that we've received in our chapter seventy funds through the years. So I know that there were some adjustments to the foundation budget. I haven't really seen the calculations from the governor's budget, how he got to that, but that is what he is proposing. Once again, this is a prelim, his preliminary budget, or if you want to call it a guideline budget, we can call it that. Still has to go through the House and Senate until final approval, so there's a, there's a good chance that it'll, it'll increase. I will tell you that our, our chapter seventy funds did increase from the governor's budget last year, but by final approval. So that, that amount will likely increase. So I think it's important to, to report out on that. Once, once again, another unknown, right? So the next steps, with your permission, I, I want to move this data forward to the town manager, as far as we're gonna be submitting an adjusted school department budget, as adjusted down to reflect the 5% insurance and not the 8%. I hope you'll support that. I, I don't think it needs a vote, but I just want to let you know what we're doing on our end.
Yeah.
The, the second step is at that March sixth meeting, and we'll talk about some potential real cuts, a, as we know it at that time. So today's February sixth, that, that's the March sixth meeting. Our leadership team will be meeting, will be talking about student impacts and potential cuts between now and then. It could be supplies, it could be full-time equivalents, it could be a whole bunch of things. As I, just, just remember, what, just cutting a salary is, is just one thing, but there's impacts. So there's a, there's a potential impact that we're reducing our insurance costs, but we're increasing our unemployment costs. So I've, I've looked at some of the data there, it's kind of a wash as far as insurance and unemployment. So we'll, we'll present some of the, the impacts there. The next step would be March fourteenth is our FinCon meeting, with the superintendent and I will, will talk and present our budget to them. Hopefully, well, I don't want to say hopefully, but on March sixth, you'll get a preview of some of the data that we'll be providing to FinCon. A lot of the data was already talked about at our December meeting, when we proposed the original budget. I think we're gonna delve a little bit deeper into cost per student, and our expenditures per student, as, as we make a sell to the FinCon to increase our, our budget. And what's, what's unclear is when we'll, we'll be providing a final budget to, for you to vote on for town meeting. I would suspect that'll, that'll be the first meeting in April, instead of the second meeting in March, I think we might need a little bit more time. For me, more time, things become more clear. And things are changing, so costs are going down, some things might be going up. It's just kind of capturing all that data as time moves along, and we are keeping track of it. So I would suspect that, that first meeting in April, we'll be providing a budget for you to vote on for, for the town meeting. Does anyone have any questions?
No, no questions. I appreciate the amount of effort that you have been putting into this, under the guidelines that we're, we're having to work under, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So the calendar that you have in front of you this evening has the early release dates for professional development days. It has the early release dates for parent-teacher conferences. It has our full day professional development days. The leadership team had conversation about these dates that you see before you this evening. They actually had conversations with the staff in each of the buildings around these dates as well. Largely, things are remaining the same. We will continue to have a full day professional development day in September, as we did this year. There will be another one on Election Day in November. Both of those days will be on Tuesdays, and that was actually deliberate. Across the district, faculty meetings are held on Tuesdays. So it was purposeful that we were able to capture the faculty meeting time added to the full-day PD day.
Makes a long day for the teachers, but yeah.
But the thinking is that it allows for a longer lunch break for them to be with colleagues and process some of the learning that's gone on for them for the day.
Less rushed.
Less rushed, which is, you know, feedback that we've heard from staff around what they would feel would be beneficial for a day like that.
Sure.
We're anxious to try that out. There will still be an early release day for professional development in December and again in March, as there is this year. The difference being that we moved that release day in December a little earlier into the month so that it wasn't
Right on vacation.
Right up until the holiday break. The feedback that we got relative to the conference days being split overall was more positive than negative.
Yeah.
And parents, as part of that opportunity to provide feedback, also said that they enjoyed the fact that they have an opportunity for a daytime meeting or an evening meeting because they don't necessarily have to take time off from work to have a conference meeting with the teacher. So on this calendar, you'll also see noted that the same week that the school would have an early release for parent-teacher conference on a Tuesday, that same week on the Thursday would be the evening meetings. So that parents know right away how they can sort of pre-plan their schedule so that they can organize time to have a conference with their teacher.
So just to be clear, on the early release day for, say, the middle-high school, they get out early, but the rest, the other two campuses have a full regular day, and then it switches for the next.
Correct.
That was a change from previous practice.
Just this year was our pilot.
Right.
And it seemed to go well enough. We really didn't encounter too many logistical issues with that. I think it's just the notion that it was different. But again, the feedback was more positive than negative from parents about maintaining this structure.
And graduation is late this year, this year, this one coming up.
The 6th of June.
Yes, yeah.
About as late as it gets.
So why is that?
Because they don't have it in May typically.
Right.
You can't, with senior week activities, a budding Memorial Day doesn't. It's how the, it's how, this year, it's the first, but that's because of how the first Saturday in June, which is typically when Lunenburg hits done their graduation, happens to be the first.
Am I counting wrong on the month, August, September? I'm counting 21 days.
Okay, hold on.
Am I missing something?
21.
Okay. So then we are a day off tomorrow.
We can make that correction.
So then that's 79 days.
Let me go back and double-check that one.
Yeah.
I remembered having this problem last time, and I just thought I better count to make sure.
So.
Had I noticed that earlier, I would let you know.
The other question I had was in regard to November. Veterans Day is Monday, the 11th, and then we have a half-day the next day.
It's for the conferences.
Right. No, no, no. I understand that.
Happened that way this year, too.
It did. Okay. I just wasn't sure if there had been thought. I know teachers like as much time, particularly at the elementary levels, as possible to get to know their students so that when they meet with parents. I just didn't know if that precipitated the three-and-a-half-day week versus, say, bumping that half-day up to the week before, but.
If you do it the week before, then you've got in every other.
You're better off just to mess up.
Although that is just one.
One week, and leave the other weeks completely intact.
Complete, okay.
You're better off, learning-wise.
Okay.
Okay, so just got to make sure the dates are.
Yep, I'll double-check that.
So that week of Veterans Day will be a little bit wonky, but you'll have two solid weeks prior to that.
Why don't you do that?
Yep. Okay. Because we can't approve it and then have it be off by the eighth, right?
Yeah.
So I counted the rest of them. They seem to be okay.
They all seem fine, so we would just have to move the last day, though, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
To the 11th.
To the 11th.
It makes sense, because I thought the.
And so those early release days, would they also, well, obviously, yeah. Their release days go with the last day. Sorry, I was answering my own question. So it would be 90s in June. Okay.
Good.
Yep, we'll make that edit and bring it back.
All right.
So do you want us to approve it, though, with that?
With those corrections?
Ending the change.
Ending the change, that's fine.
That way it's out there.
Yeah, we'll just assume that the change will be to push back the last day of school, push it out one day.
Sure. And 21 days in August, September.
Right.
Okay. All the others look right.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
You know, visually.
It matches what our requirements were.
Yeah, as long as the 180 days are in there.
So motion to approve the 2019-2020 school calendar with changes noted.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. First reading of the policy, 5402 and 5406. So, wait. First reading?
Yes, because we had a lot of discussion on it last time.
But we brought it to the public already, and we went back with it, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And then we made updates, so it's not brand-new.
It's not brand-brand new.
Okay.
It's all business, but a first read.
But a first reading, okay. So.
Because there were enough changes that.
Right. Substantial changes, okay, so. Jim, did you?
I did.
I want to know if it's okay.
Okay, pick on me. No, it addresses all the questions. 5402 addressed all the concerns that I had in the inconsistency in the language.
And now it's consistent.
Now it's consistent throughout.
Okay. And that, the one we are speaking of is the anti-bullying harassment policy, student conduct, student harassment, 5402. And.
So I will move that we waive the first reading.
Because we technically read it the last time.
We did.
Yes, yes. So yes, waive the first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, we'll bring it to the next meeting.
For a second reading.
For the second reading, yes.
And these are outlined in the school committee section of the district website, so that if people want to see the work in progress, they can comment, and they can see what the current.
And the changes highlighted?
They should be, yep.
Right, so they can see what the policy as revised looks like.
Okay, and then the next one is policy 5406, under student conduct 500 series, oh, no, 5400 series, endangering health and safety interrogation, search, and seizure policy. We also read this the last meeting, and just, we updated, per suggestions, to include the parent slash guardian be notified. And were there any other questions or concerns in regards to this one?
I believe all of my concerns were answered by the attorney.
By the school attorney, yeah.
By the school attorney.
Okay. And are you comfortable with the?
Yeah, I would just wouldn't, I don't necessarily need, I don't think it necessarily needs to be in policy. It could be in the student handbook where we address what consent is that the student can opt out of consent. And just to define what consent is. And the example is, you know, we have reasonable suspicion that X is happening. I'm going to search your backpack now, and the student has to say yes.
Right.
Okay, now I'm going to search your locker. Well, you don't have to tell them you're going to search, because it's school property.
Jacket or something.
Now I'm going to, now I'd like you to turn your pockets out. Well, no, sorry, you can't do that. They have that right to do that, and I would like the student right to be articulated somewhere so that the student knows what their rights are.
So do you think that's something in the handbook?
We can certainly speak to the attorney relative to it. I think it's more of a language piece where the student has the right to refuse.
Right.
Right.
More so than provide consent.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's a refusal, the right to refuse, as opposed to, yes.
And I don't know that it has to be in the policy that we write, but I think it can be in the student handbook that says, we have a policy that says we can do this. Here are your rights. You have the right to refuse.
I think that language sounds better than consent.
And refuse is addressed here in the end of this, in the final paragraph, where it talked about, you know, if refusing, then a parent's. So we're assuming that we're addressing the possibility that a student may refuse.
But I agree, it would be good for the students, because how many students are going through our policy, but their handbook, they have to sign off on it.
That was my thought as well.
Right, they do have to sign off on.
Yes.
I recall the parents signed those, too.
Yes, we are supposed to.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Along with the other stacks of paperwork, so you might not have it memorized.
That my dog chewed up this year. But, yes, I think that is probably the more appropriate place for something like that.
I think so.
So my concerns, then, have been addressed.
Okay, so we can waive the first reading on this one, because we didn't really make any changes once your questions were asked.
Correct.
We read it at our last meeting.
Yes.
And all we had to do is add guardian.
Guardian, along with parent, yes. Okay, so I will take a motion to waive the first reading of 5406.
I will move to waive the first reading of 5406.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment?
Open.
Open to the public. No one's here, no. They all left.
Oh, something I was going to say.
Okay, reports. Charter review.
Two left now.
Jim, did we have, we don't have a meeting, haven't had a meeting, have we?
No, the next meeting is next week.
Bad calendar planning.
It, well.
On our part.
So that was another meeting that, so yeah, Heather was triple or quadruple booked, I think, for that, for next week.
Next week, yes.
But the public hearing, public reviews are continuing with the charter review language.
Yeah.
I think we're making some significant progress. We did add some things and take
Take a look at it, yeah.
A couple things out of, off the table that we were thinking about adding. But yeah, it's making progress.
Yeah. And then after that meeting is the next public forum, correct?
Yes.
February.
In February.
What is it, the 20, it's the last Wednesday in February?
27.
February 27.
And that one is at Town Hall, I believe. I believe.
I think they're still trying to.
Okay, so the location is.
I thought they were thinking about the school.
Was it still at the school? I thought he had said Town Hall.
And then somebody told him he had to go to the Ritter, so it's still in conversation.
Okay, so the location is to be determined.
Yes.
And we'll let you know when we know.
But next week's meeting is at Ritter, it's 7:00 p.m.
Next week is at Ritter.
The 27th is the next public hearing.
Okay.
Where we should be close to providing something for the town meeting.
Close to having it, yes.
Athletic advisory.
You had a meeting last night, right?
We had a meeting last night. It was a very productive meeting. We had a quorum, which was awesome, because we were able to approve four months' worth of meetings minutes.
And fundraisers, didn't you?
There was a new fundraiser for field hockey.
Lacrosse.
Lacrosse. That was approved, yes. So there was, so part of our discussion was, there had been some discussion about whether or not they wanted to recommend a policy around the memorializing and retiring numbers as a memorializing piece. What the recommendation is that they are going to make to the school policy committee is that the policy is not to retire numbers.
Okay.
Each team may withhold a number for a period of time out of respect for the family, but the numbers will not be retired.
Okay.
So.
They're going to bring that to the policy?
Yes. Well, that will be the recommendation of the policy to the committee, so I guess I'll type that up and send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
To add that, so. And then, of course, we're still talking about the consolidation of the boosters. Lots of questions, lots of, there's still a lot of interest in it, primarily hockey, because of the uniqueness of that organization is not on board
Right.
at this point with consolidating that, but everybody else seems to be interested in pursuing more information, and we're going to try to see if we can get somebody who has done this and implemented it to come and speak to us, or do a Skype meeting with us or something, so that we can at least have some conversations with somebody who's actually done it.
And Miss, our new athletic director, hopefully, doesn't he know people who've done this?
He does. He was not at the meeting last night.
Oh, okay.
He couldn't schedule anything with them.
Okay.
So I told him I'd get back to him to schedule those.
Because he has experience with that.
Yeah, and he's got connections and can see it at work.
Okay.
And.
That's good.
So our next meeting is March 5 at 6:30 p.m.
March 5.
At the.
Project Room?
Yeah.
Okay.
The High School for Project Room.
FinCom, Carol.
The last meeting was on the 24th, and Heather presented a forecast of the general financial forecast presentation from the town manager, is what it was, and I'll just go through the conclusion rather than go through all the bits and pieces. She indicated a stable financial status by using conservative revenue estimates, contractual obligations, conservative expenditure projections, the schools, for example, at 2.5% moving forward. The revenue projections for FY '21 to '24 doesn't assume the use of free cash, but she is assuming there are certain things on it they would use the free cash for, so you will see it looks like a deficit if you look at this document, but she's figuring free cash will fill that in. And in FY 2024, there is a significant drop-off of debt with the retiring of the, some of the debt or all of the debt, I'm not familiar enough with the debt, dealing with the primary school and the library.
Yeah, yeah.
So those were, that was a significant part of that meeting. Also, she went through the capital plan, but I'll leave that for the capital planning committee report, so. Their next meeting is the 14th of February, and that's when the town manager will make her budget presentation.
Blizzard bag, we just had you.
We already did that.
Wellness advisory, Wendy.
We have not met.
Okay. In policy subcommittee, we met and we presented our policies.
Tonight.
Yes, and we have another meeting on Monday, the 25th? Yes, and we have another meeting on Monday, the 25th?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And PTO, Meredith?
Has not met since last, and we heard about the Lego fundraiser coming next.
About parents trivia thing. I saw something.
April date is what I'm looking at.
Okay.
A date is out there, I've seen it online.
I saw it online. It's like a trivia.
It's on April 6, and Townsend Ridge.
Yes, country.
Yes.
A new location.
So, yeah.
And it's trivia night again?
Trivia again, yeah.
It should be.
I have a team, but I'll go anyway.
No, we're.
We'll get a team.
We're going to have a school committee team, right?
Where we can only discuss trivia.
Only trivia, that's all, it's about trivia.
Makes it a lovely night.
Right? Okay. School, I was not there last year, though. School councils, anybody?
Not yet.
Nope.
Middle school met, and I was not able to attend, so.
Okay, nothing.
And primary school is, you know, obviously focused on.
The principal search.
Principal search.
And the capital planning committee hasn't met since we decided on that capital plan, which I already said at the last meeting.
So we have approved everything that was requested in the capital plan. So all schools' projects were approved, and then all the other requests were approved. So hopefully, that town meeting will be approved. So topics for future discussion. Meredith, what was that future agenda item that you wanted to add?
That was the, fund our future resolution.
Resolution?
I know that Lemonster has one, and I think Fitchburg based their draft off of it, so that might be something that we start with.
She did attend, that is correct.
That was what she. Okay. Okay. And so then we'll do the open space again. We'll put that on open space. I will reply to.
Mr. Barney.
Mr. Barney. And I will let you know if I hear back, okay?
And the school choice one will come back up.
Yep. And we will not be having a meeting next week because we do not have a quorum. Due to competitive class plays. So now we're going to go into executive session according to MGL C30A Section 21 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Not to return to regular sessions. Yes.
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 We're still on air.